Welcome to the, welcome to the October ninth, two thousand twenty four Business Meeting of Richmond Community Schools. If you could please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fire that held United States States in our empire and to the citizens of our country, which stands as one nation, under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If I could have the reading of the mission statement, please?
Richmond Community Schools guides students on pathways of learning to the future of women's hospitality.
And the reading of the vision statement.
Richmond Community Schools, a collaborative community nurturing mind, body, and spirit to prepare students for lives of choice and purpose.
Thank you. Dr. Wright, celebrations.
President Biden Trustee, I want to ask that our Director of Communications and Student Support, Mrs. Bridget Hazelbaker, come to the podium to announce and acknowledge tonight's honorees.
Well, we had a successful parade. We had a great senior games, or I would say class games, I'll call them. And then, so we, I actually would like to have Mr. Cox come up, Mr. Hilbert, and Mr. Worsch as well. So these are the masterminds in the help planning of the successful events that we had during homecoming week. And we also had some collaboration with our other schools as well that helped with that. So gentlemen, go ahead and just explain, or introduce yourself, if you want to know who you are.
Hey, Jay Cox, RHS history teacher.
Brandon Hilbert, project leadway and science department chair.
Derek Worch, French teacher.
And tell us a little bit, so you were in charge of the parade and the games?
Yep.
And then you two were in charge of the dance. So tell us a little bit about how many entries did we have for the parade this year?
So for the parade, I think we had fifty, fifty-six or something like that. And then we had obviously police escorts and things of that nature, but massive success. We're starting to outgrow the municipal full parking lot. We might have to look to maybe go into McBride a little bit next year, just because some of my sponsors and I were like, you know, how are we going to get everybody in here? It was kind of like playing a big game with Tetris, trying to get everybody fit up. But went off without a hitch. It was a success. Everybody had a good time, lots of smiles, lots of laughs. So can't complain at all. It was great.
And now, did you also step, who set the spirit things? Who did that?
So I do that along with a couple of students. My sister in particular, Maddie, she's a senior at Richmond High School. She's in charge of the student section, and so she kind of helps me. And then my wife, Ashlyn, is the cheer coach at RHS. So all of us together kind of put our heads together, figure what we're gonna do.
Nice, nice. Now, about the dance. Tell me a little bit about what, what happened with all that, all the planning, because it was different this year.
Okay. So this year, Brandon and I, this was our second year doing it, and we wanted to make it more than just a dance. We really wanted it to be an experience and to appeal to a greater, a greater section of RHS students. So we collaborated, partnered with Retro Arcade. They were willing to become a community partner. They donated some games, some of their arcades, some of their consoles. So that students, you know, who maybe not too much, who aren't too interested in dancing, but still have something to do. We also had a three sixty camera experience. As we said, we tried to package it more than just a dance, but an event, an evening out. Last year, we had approximately four hundred and twenty students. This year, about three thirty, three forty. Obviously, we were facing some headwinds this year, but we were very pleased with the feedback that we got from students, both the night of and in subsequent days. They, you know, they were, they were pleased that we gave them more than just a venue to have a dance. You know, we had the games. We even had some card games, for example. So as we said, we tried to make it a full evening for them.
And you guys are also the sponsors of National Arts Society?
National Honor Society.
So that's who benefited?
And the academic team.
And the academic team. So that, you guys then partnered for the proceeds and to help fund your guys' clubs. All right. Any questions?
Thank you. I mean, it was exciting. I got to be part of the parade with this fun and just a whole community event where, I mean, so many, I know a lot of, you guys have a lot of people in it, but also the whole community came together because as we rode through, I mean, they lined the streets. So, and thank you for everything you're doing as teachers, but also above and beyond these extra activities that is fun for students and impactful. So appreciate you.
Absolutely. What about the games?
Well, yeah, the games are, for those not familiar, is nine through twelve. So the high schoolers, we just do a bunch of silly stuff. So like, they have a cookie from their forehead to their mouth. They wrap each other with toilet paper, all kinds of stuff. So we had eighteen total teams this year for a total of whatever eight times, I'm not a math teacher, a hundred and sixty-four, a hundred and sixty-four students. It's always my favorite event of the year. I love my athletics, obviously. I love a lot of stuff that I do. But that event in particular is just so much fun.
And that was after the parade?
After the parade, yep. Immediately following the parade. Also, shameless plug, I DJed the homecoming dance as well.
All right. Well, now I'd like to have those who are on homecoming for it to come up. Can you guys come up here for a moment? They were in the parade themselves as well. All right. So if you guys will come up here and introduce yourselves, and obviously you're seniors. But yeah, go ahead and start with your name.
My name is William Hart. I'm a senior at Richmond High School and I'm a part of the football team.
My name is William Hart. I'm a senior at Richmond High School and I'm a part of the football team.
Kina Barker. I'm a senior. I'm a part of the postman team and the track team.
I'm a senior.
My name's Gabby Devine. I'm a senior and I'm part of the soccer girls team and UK.
My name is Clifton Addis. I'm a senior at Richmond High School. I'm a part of the football, soccer, and sprint team.
My name's Shay Sexton. I'm a double A, part of the track, girls basketball, and volleyball team.
My name's Mason Carton-Dude. I'm a senior at Richmond High School and I play basketball.
And we have two other students that weren't able to come tonight as a work event. So Mariolcer and?
Amari Jackson.
Amari.
And Deontay Watkins.
Let's see, so I'll say, if you don't mind, the experience, especially for those that had opportunity and more of a result of course of time have, but the experience overall, as I've mentioned time again, really exemplifies what our community is all about. And the compassion or care that our leaders put into such an event is only then therefore maximized by the youthful energy of the students as well as our community as a whole. Growing up here in Richmond and being part of the Old School Roses festivals, this is the closest thing that we have. And to know that our streets were still lined with our patrons and citizens with smiling faces and in love, amidst, as Mr. Worch mentioned, amidst some of the adversity that we're dealing with just a few days before Friday. And I think it really exemplified that we're resilient and we are, as I mentioned. So you get tremendous job. I believe the marquee, the royalty, the students, kings and queen candidates, congratulations for even being nominated. Your peers think highly of you, and we do as well. So tremendous job. Yes. And we can give a round of applause?
Yes. Okay, you. All right, guys. All right, one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, the security and safety update, four point oh one. Dr. Wright?
President Biden Trustee, I want to ask that Chief Rick Tholes, June, approach the podium and share with us some of the highlights of his day-to-day as well as update you all and your community as to some of the current events. Chief Tholes?
Thankfully, some of the, when I have to update you on are not current events. Several weeks ago.
Yes, yes.
Kind of happy to be able to update you on, like Miss Pickering, you asked last time up here before you, if there's certain trends that we're seeing, maybe it's a good time to share those things with you guys. A lot of what we experienced during a two-week period during the month of September, we're, we're all well aware of what we dealt with in the Richmond Community School District as well as other districts across the nation we're dealing with and some of the social media threats that we were investigating process, making sure that we are still providing that safe atmosphere for our students and our staff. Just a brief summary, it is boiled down now that I've had a little bit of a chance to start unpacking some of the information. It is pretty much boiled down to a two-week period of time. I can't give you rhymes or reasons as to why things happen the way they do or when they do. I can only tell you the correlation of what we're seeing. Shortly after the incidents in Georgia, we started seeing this across the nation, started to gather interest and become repetitive in the actions and the words that are spoken on social media that gain our interest and our concerns. I am proud to be able to tell you that the safety protocols for the Richmond Community Schools were enacted in an appropriate way. It gave us the time to be able to conduct the investigations to see where were we able to go and establish probable cause for the intimidation statute that usually governs over these type of investigations. We were able to come to quick resolution. There was a large number comparative to what we normally do as a department. But next time you see one of your SROs, give them a hug, because it was a long two weeks. I thought ten years ago, my midnight investigations were, were done as a detective of the sheriff department. We got to relive some of those experiences here recently. It was all done for the purpose of making sure we're providing a safe environment for our students and staff. And I feel confident that we did that. Throughout all of it, and now at the end of it, I can tell you my feeling is and my belief is the Richmond Community Schools are just as safe today as they were a month ago. And nothing's changed. For a brief moment, our perceptions changed. Social media has a bad knack of changing our perception sometimes if we allow it to. And that's pretty much what we experienced through this. I made some pretty poignant comments in some releases that the madness had to stop, and we were going to take everything seriously. We were going to investigate them fully, and we would expect full consequences as a result of any probable causes that we were able to establish in our investigations. I will not take credit. I'm glad that you were able to see the celebration of the homecoming week events. It was a great transition and everything that we've been dealing with for two weeks. And I believe everybody started to focus on the positive, focus on the environment that the kids should be in, focus on the fun, the activities of homecoming. And shortly after that, we went back, we joke in the, in our morning meetings as SROs, it's kind of nice to be back to the normal day-to-day chaos that we deal with, rather than the ongoing things that we dealt with during those two weeks. So just briefly, wanted to throw that at you as an update to see that trend that came and went. We're prepared to deal with things in the future if we need to. We constantly look at our safety protocols to make sure they're up to date, that are needs of district. Wanted to say thank you to Dr. Wright, Brad Walton, who had recently encouraged all of us to go through those safety protocols. Rather short timeframe prior to all this happening, funny how things work out sometimes, but they were able to be clearly followed and effectively followed during all of the different events that came up during those two weeks.
Questions?
Thank you.
Well, thank you. I also, if I could just, again, a cool to our department here with Richmond Community Schools, police, move to yourself, your officers, the sacrifice you all continue to make. We also appreciate the camaraderie and the collaboration from our local law enforcement agencies. However, I just, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Chief Tholes and our RCS PD officers for going above and beyond and extending such investigations that led to some of those consequential actions that you referenced, that has also helped everyone understand that it's a serious matter. Then we will take this opportunity. So again, good old and thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next item, four point oh two, technology update.
President Biden Trustee, I want to ask that Director Alex Hazelbaker, Director of Technology, come and share just a little update about some things that are going on in this department.
Absolutely. Good evening, Dr. Wright, School Board of Trustees and Administration. Thanks for the opportunity to share with you and our community on recent updates surrounding the network breach and our school district experiencing on Monday, on the morning of Friday, September twenty-seventh, during the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. At approximately ten oh four AM, the Department of Technology was alerted to an active ransomware attack launched against its private network attempting to encrypt network-based services and endpoints. Identification of the threat actor was quickly pinpointed by the Department of Technology, isolating all network access to the remote host. Internal investigations were initially launched with incident reporting to identify local, state, federal agencies per the Department of Technology Incident Response Plan. It would be determined upon inspection of the remote host utilized to launch the initial ransomware attack, a network breach had occurred, resulting in the deployment of the Rapid Response Team to begin an in-depth forensic investigation. Through the collaboration efforts of the Rapid Response Team and other local, state, federal agencies alongside the Department of Technology, forensic evidence was gathered to identify the threat actor's geolocation and the exploitation of vulnerabilities to gain entry resulting in the network breach. Upon completion of the forensic evidence findings with the guidance of the Rapid Response Team, recommended actions were taken to address the exploit vulnerabilities utilized by the threat actor. Additional measures were put in place by the Department of Technology to further bolster the school district's cybersecurity posture. Forensic evidence, evidence concluded the threat actor did acquire access to encrypted information stored on the locally hosted data servers. This included faculty, staff, and student information located in the student information system known as Power School. However, at this time, no evidence suggests the misuse or mishandling of this encrypted information by the threat actor. The Department of Technology continues to monitor these systems and update data handling procedures. Last week, in collaboration with the Department of E-Learning and the Department of Technology, platforms such as Canvas, Clever, and Power School were quickly, quickly reestablished to restore key curriculum-based services to the classroom. This restored critical needs for the district affected by the network breach. Communications, emergency response, and security services remained unaffected, allowing the school district to continue providing the many services and activities our students rely upon within our community. I'd like to extend a special thank you to our neighboring school districts and local community partners for providing our buildings access to additional cellular-based networks. Thank you, Bridget Hazelbaker, for your efforts and community outreach acquiring these cellular-based networks for our school district. As your Director of Technology for Richmond Community Schools, I am pleased to share that our private domain network has been cleared and approved to reestablish network services to our faculty, staff, and students. As our district prepares to depart for fall break, final implementations will be put into place preparing for the return of faculty, staff, and students on Monday, October twenty-first. Thank you to the faculty and staff of Richmond Community Schools for your continued support and trust. Your persistent words of encouragement and appreciation have kept this amazing team going each and every day. I'd like to take this opportunity to highlight some of the amazing individuals I have the pleasure to work alongside each and every day here at Richmond. It is because of this dedicated group of uniquely talented individuals, as a leader, I hold the greatest pride in serving our community. Scott Nash, Assistant Director of Technology, Kayden Matthews and Stacy Corwin, Network Administration, Steve Hazelbaker, Telecommunications Administration, Missy Griffith, Student Information System Administration, Deborah Hampton, Student Management Data Administration, Gabriel Howe, Gregory Rexrode, Kevin Ross, Trey Rogers, Building Technology Specialists. And last but not least, our unsung hero of the department who raised the initial red flag against the threat actors. And mind you, it was, it was hectic. And although she raised that initial red flag, she had tears in her eyes and she was afraid she had done something wrong, telling me, but she is the saving grace and the reason why we were able to remain open and pull the threat actors out of our network so quickly. Then added Sandra Blevins, Executive Secretary of Technology. Thank you, each of you, for your selfless service to Richmond Community Schools. Your dedication has proven your commitment to education, the well-being of our student body. The countless hours you have put in over the course of the last few weeks does not go unnoticed. As a leader, each of you reminded me why I enjoy my chosen profession each and every day. Even during the long hours well after the sun has set, you continue to keep the morale and the energy high for one another through positivity and humor. And might I say, what a difference a year makes in a department. It truly is not a job when you enjoy what it is you do for a living and work alongside an amazing team like ours. Thank you once again for everything each of you, each and every single one of you do every day.
Just a thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for recognizing others people. That's exactly what you've done and you've been an integral part in making this easier, Mr. David. Thank you.
This has been a huge undertaking and just, yeah, we, we see you. We see what you're doing.
It's not been perfect, but our biggest aim is just to make sure that we're not closing these doors.
Yeah.
Because we have students within our community that need us.
No, I should say thank you to your four little ones in school. I had to teach them quickly what we used to have to do to learn. You know, thank you so much. I know what it takes. And a special thank you to teachers and staff in schools as well that had to...
And that's the biggest thing, the flexibility that staff have shown to be able to get back to those old ways. It's been fantastic. It's helped our team to be able to focus on what it is we need to do.
So well stayed. Thank you so much, sir. Thank you so much.
Next item, five point oh one, public commentary. Cindy Drea.
We do. We have five. Okay, great. For those who wish to comment at this evening's board meeting, please keep your comments fact-based and within the time permitted. Comments are not to be personally directed or abusive. Comments recognizing the work of staff and students are always welcome. However, critical remarks concerning specific school personnel or students are to be made through the complaint process of their Home Policy ninety-one thirty. School board members do not respond to public comments during the meeting, but you will receive a follow-up email from me. The maximum time to speak is five minutes. As you join the podium, please state your name and address before speaking.
Our first individual is Steve Jones.
Hi there. Steve Jones, Principal at Charles Olmich School, the premier Olmich school in the White Water Valley. I spend more time there than I do at home, so I'll just keep it as my address. So a couple notes, I was gonna type it up, but unfortunately we had the ransomware, so all handwritten here. So as most of you are aware, RCS held a Title I math night called Math: A Recipe for Success, in Altrio Plaza on the twenty-sixth. Mother Nature really didn't, I don't know if she's not a fan of Title I, but it's two years in a row we've been raining out. So we are working on moving it indoors next year. We just, we're looking for a venue. Couple people just that made this happen, and I'm just, I'm moving out of the list. Got Carrot Scout, Brad Walton, because they were like, hey, how many tables you need? What do you need set up? All that. You know, they had all the chart wells, brought in a celebrity chef, which for those of you that got some of the brisket, I know it was quite tasty. So, but they, they made all kind of the, she made some amazing stuff for everybody to have. Bridget Hazelbaker, just forgetting the word out there. Principals, teachers for giving their time and planning such fun activities for all the families. Elizabeth Markford for putting her faith in my ability to get this all planned. And she was great because she said, what do you need? And I said, I don't know how to do this, this, and this. I think by nine o'clock next morning, she goes, I'm done. I got everything for you. So she's, she's great. Eugene Crawford, my custodian at Charles, was there for setup. The basketball team for cleaning up everything, putting the tables away, because that would've taken me about two hours. So it was a great night. Like I said, next year, hopefully get more people. But I mean, it says a lot about the spirit of the community, because even when the rain started coming down, we still had people coming in. And it's like, it's not gonna stop us, where, you know. So that was, that was great. So secondly, today we had the Boston Run, which goes back like nineteen seventy-seven, seventy-nine, somewhere thereabouts. So secondly, today we had the Boston Run, which goes back like nineteen seventy seven, seventy nine, somewhere thereabouts. I know the individual winners will be probably honored at some point here, so we'll look into them later. But boy, it was, I mean, what a great, we had a great turnout. And that's another huge event, and it is a traditional type thing that, you know, we gotta keep going. Because it is such, I mean, we had a picture, and I believe Bridgette's gonna put it out. But we had all the kids that have ever participated in the Boston Run, the high school or middle school, all in the picture, so like, kinda like the alumni. And there was a whole bunch. And I talked to a lot of those kids and they're like, yeah, I remember doing this. And, you know, last year we had a student, I think he was a junior, and he was still wearing his Boston Run shirt from fourth grade. And I said, maybe it's time to hit the weights a little bit, see if he can still fit into the shirt. So, but for that event to be successful, we got the elementary P teachers, that's Ryan Higgins, Zoe Bill, Marte, Jim Jeffries, the coaches who helped train the athletes, because I'll tell you, it's a half mile. And some of the kids make it into a sprint, which, and you know, somebody asked me, that's a half mile. I said, I'm gonna call it Uber, because I'm not, I'm not running a half mile. So Kristen and Mark Brunton for sponsoring the T-shirts, and they looked great. I don't know if you saw them, but they looked awesome. The McGowan Insurance Group for providing the water, it used to be Herndon Hope, and they've changed to McGowan Insurance Group. Eugene Crawford, once again, for setting up the sound system. And we had a great turnout by the high school cross country team and the middle school cross country team. And I believe we have a conference champion. Yes, so she was not really, but she won the SCC, and she was the lone runner. So, you know, it's just great, but I mean, that's like I said, it's one of those things that's a major undertaking. It's more just one person. And it's just, I mean, like I said, it's just great to see that something that's been going since, like I said, seventy seven, seventy nine, somewhere thereabouts, that is still going. And then such, I mean, it's been in, I don't know, eight or ten different venues, because I know it was in East Harlem. The fairgrounds had it for a while, and now we do it at Crestdale, so it was just a great game. So I appreciate the time, because thanks for having us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nash. Sorry, my computer's out. The next is Cory George.
Good evening, RCS board members, Dr. Wright, RCS administrators. Thanks for allowing me to speak. My name is Cory George. I'm a parent, a supporter of RCS, and I live at ten seventy Red Lift Board here in Richmond. I'm here to support the girls volleyball team, all the athletes of RCS, and be part of the solution, not part of the problem. I will do my best to offer my comments in a fair and respectful manner. Trust-based relational intervention. The school district has invested heavily in TBRI training for all staff and team members. TBRI teaches that when students engage in energy or choices that aren't what we expect, we should not see them as willful defiance or disregard. And do not excuse the actions of the volleyball girls on the night of nine twenty four. Their actions were wrong and should not have happened. However, on ten one, the girls apologized, took responsibility for their actions. That's what we want for our youth. We hope that they learn from their lessons. I view the girls' behavior as a call to action to the corporation. I ask each of you, had the girls not fought for what they thought was right, would we be here before you tonight? I think the answer is no. I want to publicly thank the RCS administration that intervened for accepting the girls' apology, for not viewing their actions as willful defiance or disrespect, and also to Mrs. Wolfie for ensuring the girls volleyball team got priority access to the courts for the rest of the season. Those are all things I appreciate very much. However, I do not appreciate the statement issued by RCS regarding this incident. The statement advises against speculation, innuendo, rhetoric, and propaganda. Yet, it directly does each of these things in its own statement. The title, RCS launches investigation into volleyball program, carries an implicit and explicit bias identifying the volleyball program as the target of their investigation. This is narrow and unfair to the volleyball program, especially since the investigation is not complete. The press release also advises objectivity when referencing the review, reflection, and revision by the athletic department of the facility usage calendar done on September second, twenty twenty four. If an objective review was done of court time, why did we have an in-season court time priority scheduling issue with the girls volleyball team? The press release also states that the goal is, and I quote, "to do what is best for all student athletes." The incident on nine twenty four was the fourth incident involving court time this season. It is my understanding that each of the three prior incidents were known and reported. Is that doing what's best for our student athletes? The statement is also written in a way that places blame, deflects responsibility, and is marginalizing of the girls volleyball team. In my opinion, the statement did the very things the corporation advised us not to do. It's very disappointing. So now, the call to action, let's find some quick wins. Dr. Martin Luther King said, "The ultimate measure of a man or a woman in this regard is where they stand in times of challenge and controversy." This is where we all stand. It's uncomfortable. It's challenging, but we gotta do something for the stated goal of the corporation of what is best for all student athletes. That's certainly not an easy task. I didn't set that goal. You all did. It's gonna take some work. It's gonna take some time. For the board, it's probably gonna take some money. I hope you seek quick wins and start tonight with a plan to address some of this. We know some inequities. There's many we don't know. I ask that you devote resources to seeking a quality cost to all sports. The investigation of the volleyball team incident is the iceberg. There is so much more underneath. Title IX audit, which we'll hear about later, will help long-term, but will not provide immediate relief. Start with a full review of all sports. You can start with the fall sports. It's pretty easy. The season's about over. You could look at winter sports. Are your resources aligned fairly across all sports? I've always been taught, if you wanna know what's important, all the money. Are similar uniforms provided to all student athletes? Are coaches paid similarly for similar duties? I close with a note of thanks to each of you for your service. I know it's tough. We lost a good one this week. I hope we can start somewhere. We cannot fail our kids. All kids deserve the best opportunities. We can find them, and I stand beside you, ready to help. Thank you.
Next, we have Jessica Sylvia.
I'm gonna thank you for your time. I'm gonna pass. I have more questions than commentary, so thank you.
And the next is Jonathan, I'm not sure of the last name, please.
For handwriting. Excuse me, ma'am. Jonathan Graham. I live at two twenty four Southwood Second Street. Lived in Richmond for twenty years. I'm a proud dad to a couple of recent Richmond graduates. I'm here actually to talk about Title IX as well. I'm not gonna talk about the specifics of this situation because I don't know anything about this situation. I'm the dad of a female athlete who graduated from Richmond last year. She earned a varsity letters year. She earned a couple of individual sectional championships as a track athlete. She received all-conference honors, and she also sometimes received the message that her accomplishments were not as important as the accomplishments of the white athletes. That's not rumor innuendo. That is her lived experience. I'm really glad to hear that you have an audit coming on Title IX. I'll just say that her experience is that there is work to be done regarding Title IX and RCS. And I'd also ask you just to make sure you really see and listen to female athletes, including those who are in this room. I am, I don't know most of them. Now it's dramatic. I don't know most of these young women, but I am so proud of you. What they have done is provide the kind of leadership that we should all want in our community. Thank you.
And our last is Katie Mathina.
Hello, I am Katie Mathina. I do would like to, or I would like to ask if I can bring my team up with me. So I'm here to talk about the Title IX situation that happened with our volleyball team. September twenty fourth, we have been having many issues in the previous weeks with this going on. And and on the behalf of Richmond volleyball team, I would like to say that we have sadly been facing the Title IX breaches within our sport. Title IX, which is a federal law that prohibits discrimination based on sex and education activities and critic sports. Title IX also states to have a provision of service, or support service, which we are not granted at this time due to the lack of care for the sports, or girl's sports at Richmond High School. We fought for what we believed was right. Maybe our actions were not correct in the moment, but we had told administration or older people that were in the athletic department and nothing was getting done. We were tired of this, so we had to do something. Now we are currently facing to finish the rest of our season without a coach, which is very hard against us, but we are using this to become a stronger team and to show what's right for women's sports. I know there's very many people, a lot of them probably aren't here at the moment, that we have all felt very supportive by, and we would like the same from you guys. Ms. Wolfie had talked to us, and we did feel her, not sympathy, but we felt that she did care. But we would like more than I will fix this, or that we get the gym time, that we were deserved in the first place. We had been previously kicked out of the gym when it was priority in our season. And if it was the athletic director with scheduling, then it shouldn't have been an issue in the first place. It should have been went over, and we should have had priority no matter what we were in season. I'm sorry. There's also very many other things that happened that evening that we were kind of putting aside, and we're focusing on the main idea that we did wrong. But in many people, we do believe, or me and many other people do believe that we did what was correct. Because like someone else had previously said, we wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for that. And this situation would still be going on because there's stories in the past, you know, what we can believe is what we believe. But it's continuing to go on. I am a junior here, and this has been going on since I've been a freshman. And it's just now coming to attention because we've had to make it come to attention. So yes, we do wanna say thanks to Ray Wolfie for allowing us to have the gym for the rest of our season. But we are still disappointed in the fact that we should have had the gym from the start because we wouldn't be fighting these situations. We would actually have our head coach right now that we do not have. And we would also, we just wouldn't be here in this situation, wouldn't it become about. The Title IX audit was, I guess it was mentioned in the past, or the sports where it's like the equality or whatever. My thing about that, or my opinion on that, is would the coaches have been changed differently to show that we were following the rules instead of just showing how we are, if that makes sense? I would also like to just give my opinion on the guys and women's sports, like the equality versus or, for example, football and basketball versus other sports. They get a lot more income, which leads them to have greater or nicer things. But we should, I think there's a way that we can find a different way to treat all sports equally. All sports should have the same amount of jerseys. We shouldn't be limited. I was, I'm a runner on the track team, and we didn't even have enough jerseys to fulfill our entire team. And that's really sad because, like, the people who are in the other jerseys, they must, like, feel some type of way. I was once in a different jersey, and I'm like, I don't feel like a team. So we just wanna say thank you, guys, and we hope that something this has brought, and we hope that it gets solved soon. Thank you.
We appreciate all of you who have come to speak tonight. Cindy has been offering commentary. Number six on our agenda are highlights and discussions. Yes, I'll make a statement. So I have one kind of prepared. Obviously, there's been a lot of things in the news, and I anticipated perhaps maybe some speakers tonight, so I wrote up a personal statement. I just wanna clarify that these are my own beliefs and don't represent the entire board, so we are individuals. So first, I wanted to say that I'm a mom of three kids, two girls and a boy who participate in sports at Richmond Community Schools, and volleyball, swimming, and diving, and tennis, and golf. I don't think I'm a tennis board there, so I've been involved. I care about all students. I care about all female and male students and how they're treated in the classroom, how they're treated in sports, and how they're treated at any activity that they participate in at Richmond Community Schools. I wanted just, so the public knows, because I think that it's kind of tricky sometimes to understand the board's position or what the board's work is, so I just want to clarify that. But the board, the school board's role is to oversee the work of Dr. Wright and the cabinet, along with policymaking. We did that this evening in our work session. We are oversight. We ask questions. We don't hire. We don't fire. We don't investigate. We don't dig into personnel matters. We're not supposed to. But I want you to know that we, or I, am asking those questions. I am hearing you. And I am, and we, I'm trying not to use we, because I'm trying to make it a personal statement. So I guess I am requesting external investigations and patiently waiting for this due process. But I guess I just wanna let you know that you are heard, and there is a process that is happening, so, but thank you. Any other board member or board discussions or highlights? Okay, we'll move on to consent items. Item seven point O one, human resources. I guess we can look at item seven point O one through seven point O seven, all of the consent items. I need a motion.
I move to accept the consent items as presented.
I have a second. Questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Ayes. All those opposed, nay. Vote passes five to zero. Next, action items. Eight point O one, donations.
I move that we accept the donations as presented.
Awesome.
Motion by member schools, or second by member brand. Questions or comments?
Thank you. Everyone who has been led to donate.
Great. It looks like we have eight hundred dollars worth of donations that we're approving. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Ayes opposed, nay. Vote passes five to zero. Eight point zero two additional accounts payable docket as presented. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, motion by member Brunton, the second by member Pickering. Questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Ayes.
Opposed, nay. Vote passes five to zero. Item eight point O three, the budget adoption, the twenty twenty five budget adoption. Need motion to approve to adopt the budget as presented. Need motion to approve to adopt the budget as presented? I'll make the motion.
Second.
A motion by member Brunton, a second by member Weber. Questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Vote passes five to zero. Item 8.04, the 2025-2027 capital project adoption resolution. I'll move that it's adopted. I have a motion by member Brunton, a second by member Brand. Questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Nay. Nay. Vote passes four to one. 8.05, the 2025 to 2030 best replacement plan adoption. I have a motion by member Pickering, a second by member Brand. Questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Vote passes five to zero. Item 8.06, the resolution for additional appropriations.
I move that we adopt 8.06, the resolution for additional appropriations.
My second. Questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Vote passes five to zero. Item 8.07, this is the Title IX agreement with Church, Church, Hiddle and Antrim. Make a motion. Motion by member Brunton, second by member Stoltz. Questions or comments? If I have a question as far as the timeline, Dr. Wright, would you share a little bit of the timeline of when this process started? And how we got to the point now of this audit?
Yes, President Brun, trustees, this was a conversation that had occurred as early as this time last year. It was brought to my attention that we would want to be preempted regarding concerns being involved in the Title IX. And at that, our civil opposition team met to discuss ways in which we could go about doing so. Just this past spring, conversations continue as a board. You are also charged as to look into things that you all were being informed of and had concern with. And so this has been something that again has been disrupted. What we now have at the force is an opportunity to partner with a law firm that has experience. And he has specialty in these areas to come in and provide our corporation with the opportunity to do what is that we aim to, which is be inclusive and equitable across the board. And so I know that our Director of Human Resources, Mr. Stacy Mobs, he's camera shy and so he may not come up. But as far as the timeline, once the board approves the action item, if it is so moved. And we will work with Church, Church, Hiddle and Antrim to get underway.
Could you, I, I, I feel like I've got a lot of questions. It's obvious that other people have concerns, questions. Could you kind of flesh out what does the process look like? What would, just, what are the details?
I won't steal his thunder and his opportunity to, because I know that he has been working definitely with the law firm as well as just throughout what he does. And so, Mr. Mobs?
Sure. So our first correspondence with Church, Church, Hiddle and Antrim was July 22nd. That's when they, we started that email back and forth with them on getting something started. And, and then we actually had it, it was a little bit late for the last board meeting, to present the last board meeting where you signed it. It just came in too late, the final agreement with them. So they offered two different, two different, one was completely look at everything, every sport, K-12. There are nine different scopes that they, that they look at. And the other one was more targeted. And so there's a big financial difference between the two, but that shouldn't drive everything. And I don't think it did for this one either. The feeling was we're going to look mainly at nine, 12, because that's what really drives everything else. And that'll give us some guidance and some direction. If we feel like there's anything else, we can, I'm sure we can expand that. They, of the nine scopes that they have, we can, they said typically they'll meet with us, find out what our needs are. We can let them know what's going on. And then they, they said, you know, we'll choose four of those scopes and then follow the path of those four. Once again, I believe if they find anything that would be a red flag to them, that we can, we can expand that as well with a new agreement or amendments. They, well, their process is they'll ask for documentation. They'll make site visits to all of our athletic facilities. They'll take pictures. They'll interview athletes. They'll interview coaches. I'm not sure. I can't remember if they interviewed parents or not. I think it's mainly focused on interview administration. And that's where they'll get all of their data. And then this will continue into the spring. It won't be anything that'd be wrapped up in the next week or two.
And then do they report back to us?
They will present a report back to us. I'm not sure how that report will look. We can find out once we sign this agreement. I told them I would let them know tomorrow how this goes. And then I'm sure they, they're actually pretty quick on, on their turnaround. At least I've found that so far. And then we'll probably learn more about that. I'm sure to be detailed. This isn't anything that they're new to. This is something that they've, they've done before and they have two people that I feel like, at least it felt like that they're dedicated to this portion of the law.
Do, when they talk about scope, is this something that they're going to say, hey, for this year? Or is it going to be a little bit of historical for people they talk to, like?
Scope is, scope is like, there are nine different things. Like one is, like we heard today, practice times. Practice times, availability of facilities, locker rooms, coaching, per diem on travel. So those are the different scopes. There's nine of them. And so I'm sure what they're going to do is they're going to look at right now. So they're not going to worry about anything that happened a year ago. Because you know, that's in the past. And so they want to know for, if, you know, what the compliance is as, as of this point. And they give us some kind of direction of how we should move forward.
And if we determine we would like to broaden the scope, I'm assuming that we could, we could employ them for extra?
I'm sure they would take our check. I'm pretty confident they would, they would be available to do that. They, they've been wonderful to work with and we have some history with them.
Just for the public, the four scopes, member one is equipment supplies. Number two is scheduling of games and practice times. Number three is locker rooms, practice and competitive facilities. Number four is publicity according to the contract. What I guess I'd like from you, Mr. Mobs, is, can we see the other five scopes? Can you get?
I can, I can send them to you. I can read them. I've got them right here if you want me to tell you what those are.
That'd be great.
Okay, so equipment supplies, you said, scheduling, games and practice times, you said. Team travel, per diem allowance was one that you did mention.
Oh, it's kind of, so.
Okay. Opportunity to receive coaching, assignment and compensation of coaches. Locker rooms, practice and competitive facilities, medical training facilities and services. And then publicity and support services. Now, in the, in, in what they've given us previously, that, that's still to go. I, I don't think we're locked into those four.
I'm guessing there's some overlap as well.
There's some overlap as well. And, and but if there's something that you think, you know what, I'd really rather have this one than this one, then I'm sure that, that can be worked into.
I mean, I just don't want to leave any rocks in term.
Correct. And, and I don't think they would want that either. You know, they're, yeah.
And then you talked about a report. So is that report, is that just a, is that like an action plan? Is that, you know, you're out of compliance here? Are we going to just this? Do you have any further idea what that looks like?
I don't, but I can find out. So once we get in this, I'm sure, you know, there's the questions that, that we can ask and see what that is.
Good. I, I think timing is fairly crucial as we have bond money sort of available that is still sort of in limbo for athletics. And I think if there are significant investments to be made, the sooner we know that, the better.
I can share that with them. Yeah.
Would they alert us to red flags if something came up?
Oh, I'm sure they will.
Wait till the end of the audit to get findings when, you know, are there check-ins?
Right. If they, if, when they get started on something, I, I could ask them to do that. I don't know what their, you know, what their feelings are, but I can, I can request that.
So you said they will not go back at all, like prior years?
You know, I, I said that and I probably shouldn't because I don't know what they'll do. I, I really don't.
Yeah, I, I think it'd be beneficial. Just, I think history is important.
Right. Like I said, this isn't their first time doing this. I'm sure they have a lot of experience in this and I'm sure they're going to be very thorough. So. And I probably, I misspoke for that. I apologize for that.
Oh, Mr. Mobs, as what the board is referencing, if there are particular areas of emphasis that you all would prefer. Although it may not be found, one of the things that in speaking with Church, Church, Hiddle, Antrim is that, and of their previous experiences. There's little room to truncate advice.
Well, I would concur with what Austin said. I am very interested in some history. So if you could dig into that to see if that's something that they could offer as well.
Sure.
President Brun? I, I had a very limited amount of exposure in some of these other, in this and other venues. I think it's important that the public understands Title IX is more than just athletics, okay? There's, it's multi-faceted and it can, and as the young lady accurately said when she made her presentation. It involves all, many aspects of the educational experience. And not that I'm afraid that it ever would, but this will not be a document that sits on our shelf. It needs to be obviously a stimulus. We don't know what it's going to be stimulating and we don't know what direction response I'll take. One thing you might consider would be a consideration of creating, once a report's received, perhaps a advisory committee to review it. It's hard to do things as a committee of the whole and that committee is six or seven people. But it's also important that there be accountability and some sense of investment in the result by all of you. So that's something to think about. The statute was amended on committee appointments as it relates to whether matters need to be done in, you know, I'm not trying to argue secrecy, but I think there needs to be pretty candid exchanges when you go through this report, talk about what the implications might be. You could have an advisory committee. It is not subject to the open door law, but you can only have one board member on that committee. So these are things to think about. I'm not suggesting it should be scripted yet. But again, I think transparency is important, but I think also thoroughness in a sense when this is done. transparency is important, but I think also thoroughness in a sense when this is done. And it may not be done really quickly. There may be more than one engagement letter that we have with Church, Church, Hill and Antrim, whomever. But I think this needs to be understood as being a starting point. And, uh, the finish line may not be directly in our sights right now. We may think it is, but it may not be.
I, I'd just add that I'm glad to know that they are open to expanding the scope of this review if needed, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mops.
I have a motion by member Branton, the second by member Stoltz. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nay, vote passes five to zero. Next on the agenda, item eight point so eight, the request to advertise for the public auction.
I know that we, um, advertised for the public auction.
I have a motion by member Stoltz, a session by member Branton, questions or comments?
Sorry, I didn't. Actually, I missed the date on that. Okay.
I know historically, I, I believe the process is the, the, the bus garage is open for people to go buy, and, uh, and if they need something for the classroom or whatnot, it's, it's free picking, so to speak. Um, it might be nice if we, you know, obviously could do like a short YouTube video of just filming what's there and maybe making that available so people don't have to project to the bus garage. I mean, if, if people are looking for desk, or they could, oh, they had three there, I mean, I think it might be helpful for some folks.
That's, I think that's a great idea. Is it possible to even have that, um, as an advertisement too? You know, like, um, the people who would possibly wanna buy these items after the teachers have gone out? Um, is that something we could look into?
I think, I assume it may be. I know that with our Assistant Superintendent of Operations, Mr. Scalf, I'm not sure if there's any particular, uh, regulations that were meant else from doing such.
No, there's not. It's a public auction. What I will say is, um, while Mr. Hazelbaker is working, we have limited capabilities of being able to send things like that out, um, right now. So, um, but Walter Hawkins Auctioneers actually comes out and takes pictures. It's all on their website, a hundred percent of what's available. They will take both pictures of groups of things, and, um, our public, the advertisement has that link to their website in there. You can actually see everything there. So, um, they handle most of that, and it's a really great resource. It's an excellent website, and everything can be viewed there, so.
And that's a link to our employees, rather than, oh, I've never actually seen it through an email. I mean, that'd be nice, like, just click rather than go look for it.
Okay, um, now, what we will probably do as we do, um, each auction is we do talk with principals about it, and, and they will ask, you know, do you have any of this? They actually call us before they go out, because they're like, is there any of this? Because we're kinda looking for this, and if there's not, then they don't waste their time. Um, it's very rare for somebody to just wanna kinda just, like, take an afternoon and come look without having an idea of what they're already in need of, because most of them, um, have already talked to each other about what they have, so that if they can swap, um, we take care of that as well. So, um, the, the communication between the buildings is super great, and that's something that everybody tries really hard to continue to use things that they need, um, before taking it out there. But we do, we, we try our best to make sure everybody has the accessibility that they need to get out there. If there's something they want, that we're sure that, that we get it back to them.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed nay, vote passes five to zero. Next, action item eight point oh one, the addendum. Um, I am acknowledging the receipt from the, of course, uh, the notification letter of advising of the formal resignation of Pete Zaleski from the RCS Board. And an official action is required, and motion would be as follows. I declare a vacancy on the RCS Board of School trustees from the resignation of Pete Zaleski effective October seventh, twenty point four. We have motion in a second. I make the motion. Oh, second, thank you. Motion by member Branton, second by member Stoltz, questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those, nay, opposed nay? So I have to do a roll call. Um, member Stoltz?
Aye.
Uh, Weber?
Aye.
Branton?
Aye.
Branton, aye. The Green?
Nipsey.
Vote passes four to zero. At this time, uh, we need to talk about, um, a timeline. Um, I know that we have a limited window to advertise for this position, and so hopefully we can get our calendar down, and I'm going to, um, propose some things, and we'll just have a discussion. Um, tomorrow, we will, we should post the vacancy, which would be October tenth for this position. My suggestion is that, uh, we accept applications for as long as possible, because we want the public to know and be able to get some applicants in. Um, and I think, yes. So my proposal would be that we accept applications till October twenty eighth, which gives us, uh, two, one, two, two and a half weeks. Um, if we did that, um, we could have an executive session to review the applicants. Um, and we can do that and possibly make cuts from applicants if we would want to, which would be a meeting on October thirtieth, thirtieth, an exec session at five thirty. And then, um, I would propose that we have interviews on November fourth at five thirty, and propose that we have an executive session immediately following that. And then propose a special meeting to make a tournament on November sixth at five thirty. But I tried to stick to Wednesdays and one Monday, just because, but I wanted to check everyone's availability. That is taking us down to the wire. I mean, but it also allows for an applicant pool to come in. I mean, obviously, we want a strong applicant, um, you know, we want everyone interested in this position. Also, some stipulations for this position, it must be someone who is at least twenty-one years old, and the person must have continuously live somewhere within the RCS district for that one year prior. Those are the two stipulations.
It's an at-large position pending in twenty?
Yes, twenty twenty-six.
Did you see interviews on November fourth?
I'm gonna go back to the day, and you guys tell me if these work for all of you. Uh, the, we would need an executive session on October thirtieth at five thirty. I expect that to be a fairly short meeting. Are all of you available that day? No, do you want me to book for another day, or? Okay, okay, so that would be a short meeting. Uh, we would have interviews, no, interviews November fourth, and that is a Monday. Okay, that whole week, or?
Just the?
Okay. Um, what about interviews on the fifth?
Is that for the same lunch?
Yeah, is that okay? Or is that?
Are you doing the fourth and the fifth, or just either or?
Okay.
I don't wanna, okay, like, voting is sacred.
Okay.
Same choice.
Okay, and they would be in for a half an hour for an interview of the entire day.
True.
Okay.
Can you just push it to the sixth, so then we do it the seventh?
I think we're with the, the seventh is our?
The seventh is your?
So we can, we could make the, okay.
Yeah, if you, and you're, make sure, so you're only gonna have interviews on the one evening?
Yes.
Okay, because it's four, I don't think, person, because there's two nights of interviews, make one and not make the other, which makes, makes it pretty difficult.
Oh, yeah, right, so, okay, so if interviews were November sixth, is, is everyone on the board available at five thirty? Immediately after that, um, we would have an exec session. So that's at five thirty on the sixth, and then an exec session after to discuss. And then the seventh, we would appoint, and I'm, I know that's a short meeting, but we do that at five o'clock, because I do have an appointment at five thirty.
Forty?
Uh, four thirty, I don't see, this four thirty work, does that work?
I can do that.
Your call, okay, so that would be November seventh, at four thirty would be the time for then, special meeting to make the appointment.
I think it's added to the agenda. Mine, I think we had to add some.
No.
Sorry, guys.
Okay.
If the person couldn't make it, we could adjust. We could come in and, or, you know, there'll be, performers need to be there, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay, good. And we'll get that, and I'll get with Cindy, if you didn't get all those dates, so we can make sure that's made public for everyone who would like to apply. Is there anything, I guess, that we would want to add? We don't have another meeting before to just say what maybe characteristics, or talk about what board life is like?
Well, the other thing I think you ought to briefly think about is you've obviously done this relatively recently with Mr. Mops. Uh, so the form that you have, either the application form or the expression of interest, what are your characteristics, can you pretty well get that approved as far as, you know, any modifications that anyone would wanna see? Obviously, Austin probably hasn't seen it, I don't know. Yeah, I haven't, it's not, okay, so.
Yes.
That, I mean, we don't have much time, I guess, Austin.
No, does that need, can that be something that's emailed, or does that have to be in a public forum?
No, it doesn't have to be in public forum. In fact, what I was gonna suggest is, depending on your comfort level, I'm not wanting necessarily to be excited about the forms themselves. I'm more than gonna talk to people. If you would feel comfortable signing that obligation to one or two people to look over, that might be something.
Okay, I think, didn't know we talked about last time. I know there are some tweaks to the questions that we had posed before, about just making it a little more clear. Um, and then, oh, did we talk about sending those out to the candidate? Like, people that were going to interview, like, questions, so they get us, so they get us sent? I know, I went through it, it's, it's, yes, it's an interview. Like, you want, you want things to be on the spot, but I also feel like, uh, it's such a big job, and everyone's coming from a different point of view of, you know, giving them maybe more of a scope or a high level. I don't know what that looks like, but just, I know we talked about it briefly, and we didn't think we'd find ourselves here this quickly, so.
It's, uh, would you be interested, and maybe another board member is looking at the application, and we would want to get it finalized tomorrow, I'd say, so we can get it, the application, and then you'd have a little more time to look at interview questions.
I think the application was fine.
Okay, so the application's good.
We could have a final run, right? I mean, the questions could be out as just two days ahead, and they wouldn't have enough.
Yeah.
You could do that, you could, you could talk about your questions, and as you have your exec session or the application. They would decide, we could, we can, decide if they can, we can modify them, and then decide if they need to be sent out or not.
Yeah.
Okay.
On the thirty, do that.
Great. And would anyone like to talk about responsibilities of being on the?
I just, I think that November sixth, as far as the thirty days, it's gonna have to be November sixth for that thirty days.
Oh, it is.
If you look at the first thirty-one days of October, so I just wanna make sure that as far as timing, that you're looking at that window.
And you start on the tenth, you basically have twelve days, or way two days in October.
Start on the day to resign, or as today?
The day doesn't count, okay? Day doesn't count, so, the, day one is?
Is yesterday.
Day one.
Tomorrow. Tomorrow.
Day one is the, you know, the declaration of the vacancy.
Okay, which is today.
Today. And day, well, that's day zero, and then?
Okay.
Tomorrow, day one.
So we'll be okay.
So, November seventh is your drop date.
Okay, so we can assign that position on that day, on the seventh.
You can't final action, you need four votes, so if you can't, you end up with three-three, then we're gonna have to talk to Circuit Court Judge, see if she'll give you a little more time.
Okay. Is everyone okay with that? Yeah. Okay, would anyone like to talk about some of their responsibilities, or the time involved, or some qualities of what it takes to be an adequate board member, or some activity, or just the day-to-day life of a board member?
Austin, you're the newest. What's it been like?
It's an honor. That's, um, it's definitely eye-opening to see, I think there's a perception of what the board should do, or what people think the board does, and I was, eye-opening to me to come on board and realize that, uh, it's much more oversight, which is quite different from my day job. So that's been a little bit more of an, an adjustment, but, um, but yeah, it's, it's definitely eye-opening to see, you know, as we've talked about so often, being out of the weeds, that, that's truly where we belong, is out of the weeds, you know? It's, it's something to consider for anybody that's looking to, to get into it, that, um, you're not as involved in day-to-day as what one might assume, or. Can be your word.
I do think, I was surprised by that eth and flow, we just don't know. Some, some weeks it's non-stop, um, where we're trying to be other things. We all have day jobs, and then, you know, sometimes you have those moments where you're like, I can talk to these people, and, you know, which I'd like to do that sometimes, but, uh, that was just surprising to me. So it's just always something to think about, and, you know, we try to keep our s- board meetings always scheduled and, and, uh, consistent and, you know, consider each other's time.
Anybody's worried about consistency-wise, I don't say that, it's schedule-wise, it's very interesting.
Yeah.
There's certainly that, but, uh, I, I think the biggest thing is you have to understand the school system employs people to do the whole host of different jobs, it's, you know. A lot of times we think of technology in the background, but we see, you know, Alex has been a superstar of late, so, um, so you, you have to trust that, you know, our, our sole employee hires the, the right people to perform these roles, and, and let each one of them go to, go to work in their respective roles. So, and that kinda ties back to being out of the weeds. And just, just allowing everybody to go to work every day for their jobs.
Yeah, and I will add, I, you know, obviously, we're all very diverse. We work different jobs, you know, I've never been in education before. So, you know, I know me personally, just welcome, you know, even if you've never thought about it before, um, just kind of having a passion, wanting to support community and kids, and, um, you know, work towards a common goal is really important, and it takes all different skill sets. So, um, I think that's what's unique about us, especially right now. We, you know, all have our strengths and, um, come from different places and do different things, and it, it works. So it's really important, encouraging if someone just doesn't think that they have what it takes. You do, I'm sure you do.
Great. Okay, so I think we have that calendar figured out, great. And now, um, we will have the preview of the upcoming meeting. The next business meeting will be Wednesday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four at four P M. Um, but I guess I should advertise before that, we, um, will have our public interviews, which will be public, which would be November sixth at five thirty, before the next board meeting. Uh, but November thirteenth, um, our board meeting, our special note will be at four P M. We will not have a work session since four P M, because we, school board members will be attending ISBA Fall Regional Meeting that evening. So we will have a meeting at four P M. Dr. Wright, the adjourn, the bell ringer is adjourned.
President Branton, trustees, I'm gonna ask that Mrs. Bridget Hazelbaker rejoin us at the podium for tonight's bell ring.
I just wanna say, the bell ringer, we had a fantastic middle school, intermediate school, um, choir concert last night. So great turnout, um, thank you to, um, Mr. Johnson and, uh, and all the other, um, higher teachers in our building. So it was a great, um, event, and the students, the numbers are getting bigger and bigger, and choir in our music programs overall, so. Bell ring, thank you.
Thank you, Hazelbaker.
Anything else, Dr. Wright?
Uh, outside of, again, much appreciation for our community, for, for what it is that we all contribute to, which is, in fact, we'll stay up to certain limits. Thank you for calling.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.